Ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the work session of Norberth Borough Council, Wednesday, October 2nd at 7:30 PM. Council Rickards is going to be absent. I'll let you call it over. Mr. Metcalf?
Mr. Weisborn here. Ms. Rickards is absent.
Ms. Pananopoulos?
Here.
Mr. McGreevy?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Ted Mofit?
President.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch?
Here.
And President Aaron Mutter?
Here. First order of business, under President's comments, we have a new member of council, Mr. Bush. We welcomed you into that meeting, but then, because you're starting the house, and that necessitates a few changes to the committee appointments. So, Mr. Bush, I have spoken with Council Rickards, who is absent. She has been serving on three committees at once, and she is going to remain as Finance Chair, but her vice-chairmanship of the Infrastructure Committee will go to you, and membership in the Public Safety Committee will go to you. We have a few months left in the year until we seat a new council on January 1st, and we will make additional changes at that time. Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
I only have very brief comments. Nothing dramatic has happened since our last Borough Council meeting. The Business Association has an event coming up this Saturday, Oktoberfest, and it's always a very popular, fun event. If it hasn't sold out, Ed, has it sold out yet?
No, still to be available.
A couple tickets available, not a lot. Buy them while you can, and come join all of your neighbors and friends and support a function that helps support the Dickens Fest, one of the big festivals in the year. And this year, it also supports Friends of Seabine Park, so come and join us. And I want to wish those residents of Norberth and citizens who are celebrating Rosh Hashanah a very happy and healthy New Year. And other than that, that is it.
All right, thank you. Streetlight program, Mr. West, I'll let you take the lead.
So, tonight's a big night for Norberth. We have in the house Mike Fuller with Keystone Lighting Solutions. He is our guru, everything, streetlights and more, because it goes beyond just our streetlights. We're looking at every borough-owned light exterior. I'm not talking about interior lights. Mike has a lot of information, all of which was forwarded to council last week. Again, just to reiterate, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is purely informational, and Mike is here. Please type for him if you have questions. He is everything and anything having to do with streetlights inside and out. Without further ado, Mike?
I'm gonna move. Yeah, please. So I'm gonna leave it skewed like that, because it actually gives the impression that it's turned towards you.
Do you have an impression?
You get that impression?
Yeah.
That was nothing. Just like... Yes, so, thanks, Matt. We met many months ago, earlier in the year. We were, at that time, looking at feasibility study where we kind of assessed what your opportunity was to potentially upgrade to LED technology for your street lighting and some of the other area lighting around Norberth. And since that time, when you approved moving into the design phase, we've done these comprehensive GIS-based audits. We've done design, created a standardized design for your roadway lighting system, and we've also done a major procurement effort where we've identified exactly what fixture manufacturers we want to use, what installers we're going to use, and we have all those costs now figured out. So, we're here to show you really a final project specification and proposal, and to present that to you, so at your next meeting, you can decide if you want to move forward and with what scope you want to move forward. Okay? So, before we get into your project, I'm gonna just do a little bit of a refresher about the program itself. But before I even do that, let's just talk about the technology. Why do you want to upgrade to LED technology? So, generally, LED is not some cutting-edge technology in the lighting world. It's really been the standard for five to 10 years. If there's any new construction going on, it's getting LED lighting. It just so happens that we have a very large installed base of roadway lighting systems that are older technology, and by going to LED, the primary financial benefits are going to come on the energy side, so you're going to reduce your energy costs for those lights or energy consumption by 50 to 75%. You're going to reduce your maintenance costs by 50 to 80%. And then, you're also going to get the benefits of just the better aesthetic of standard, uniform, upgraded lighting throughout the whole borough that provides better safety, better pedestrian visibility, vehicular pedestrian conflict areas are going to be more visible. And also, the LEDs are much more controllable, so we actually are reducing the amount of light pollution that's going up into the air. And I'll show you a little bit later that this is a very green and sustainable solution, also in terms of the greenhouse gases that are reduced as a result of this, the energy savings. So, the DVRPC developed the Regional Streetlight Procurement Program, and why did they do it? Because they saw municipalities weren't adopting LED technology as quickly as they possibly could, and when looking into it, they just basically figured out they didn't have all the resources that they needed to pull off such a project. So, not that this is rocket science, but you do need some technical expertise, you need some possibly financing support, you need project management support, and then there's the ability to leverage the scale of 26 municipalities, in this case, working together to procure everything that you need at the best possible cost, much better than you could as an individual municipality. So, it's a turnkey approach, and really, everything that you need to implement the project is being provided to you through the program. So, this is the second round of the program. The first round, there were 35 municipalities that participated. We upgraded over 25,000 streetlights. My firm was actually the technical advisor to that program. We actually used an energy service company. It was a slightly different model. This time, the design professionals kind of leading everything. So, but I'm very familiar with the first round because of our role with the first round. The first round generated $15.3 million in net savings after the projects were paid for. That's over a 20-year period for those municipalities, and again, a very sustainable solution. In round one, we reduced greenhouse gas emissions by 5,500 metric tons a year for all those municipalities. Round two, we're slightly smaller. We have 26 municipalities. Everybody has stayed in the program all the way through. I wouldn't be surprised if 26 municipalities do projects. I think we're up to like eight of the 26 have already approved, moving forward with some scope for their lighting upgrade, and that represents about 15,000 streetlights. So, I did want to highlight, as I mentioned, we did take a slightly different approach. The pool procurement that we did was very successful. We were able to, again, leverage the scale of all municipalities. We went a little bit more on a direct route to the manufacturers and got really excellent pricing on everything. So, I'm in a good position to come back and show you a project that actually cost less than what we estimated in the feasibility phase. Okay? We were estimating that we're probably about 18% below the cost of round one, which we rounded one was really below market levels in itself, but we've achieved a better result. This is where we stand in the process right now. So, after feasibility, we went into phase two, the design phase. We're at the end of phase two, and so your decision will be whether you want to move forward into construction with the project, and that would be the action that you would take up at your, probably, your next meeting after you've evaluated what I'm presenting tonight. And then, we go into construction, and then KLS stays on and manages the project for you. We do have an installer that we've selected. It's Armor and Sons out of Landmore area. They were our top installer in the first round, and as a matter of fact, they installed about as much in the first round as we have for the entire second round, so they're fully capable of handling the volume of this type of work. So, let's talk about your project in particular. So, we do have a more detailed proposal that's behind this PowerPoint presentation. Obviously, we're just summarizing things for you here tonight, but this is just for reference only. It's not to talk about any individual lights, but I do want to tell you that you got this very powerful GIS-based audit that was completed. Of course, I like it because I can do the appropriate design work that I need to, but even if you were not to move forward with the project, although your project is very attractive, which helps explain why it's even above the average in terms of the financial returns compared to other municipalities, I do want to point out that every one of these little dots here has about 20 attributes of data behind it. So, you click on any one of those, and it has all the data behind it. So, there's a big database. Even if you don't move forward, you get this deliverable as part of the design phase. So, this can be utilized in any way you want to, integrated into a GIS system, or just using the data in a variety of different ways for maintenance tracking or whatever. So, let's talk about what your project includes. This is the primary part of the project in terms of quantities. You have 288 of the existing overhead fixtures. This is generally your street lighting or your roadway lighting. And basically, we take off the old head, put on a new head, and again, I should mention that our design approach, unlike the feasibility, where we kind of just said, what do you have now? We're going to give you something equivalent in LED. And doing a true design, we actually looked at your road classifications, and so we said all of your local roads are going to get this type of LED illumination in the collectors and the majors. So, you're going to have a very standardized system, and your management provided all that information to us and how it works, so you have a very standardized system behind this. You also have 11 of these four-sided colonial fixtures. They will go from 100-watt fixture to a 39-watt LED. Again, we just take off the head and put on the new head. We also are evaluating, and it's an option in your project to consider, and this is for your decorative lights. They are older technology, they're 100-watt metal halide. You have about 72 of these, and we're looking at a retrofit kit for those. So, you can actually, you keep the fixture itself because you've invested a lot in the fixture. It's a very expensive fixture, so what we do is we change the components inside and do this in LED guts, basically. You also have a variety of area lighting fixtures in your parks and parking lots and around other municipal buildings, and so those are all going to be upgraded essentially with new fixtures of similar types. So, for example, on your basketball court, we have 16 fixtures. We keep the arm, we put a new fixture right on the end of that arm, and you're going from like 1,000-watt fixture to under 400 watts in LED, and it's going to give better illumination. Okay? And then, all those other various types are also upgraded, including your parking lots, both municipal lot and the one on City. Then, you do have, this count may seem a little bit high, but this is actually the kind of individual lamps, separate little red, green, and yellow is a separate quantity of one. So, you have 24 existing traffic signal lamps and pedestrian signs, and those would get upgraded to LED technology. There are 12 existing flashers. We don't include those because there's, you're actually paying no energy for those grouping those, so there's really not a benefit to grouping those.
Is there a maintenance benefit?
There may be a slight maintenance benefit, and we certainly could throw those in just to refresh everything. You know, those lamps are, you know, in the less than $50 range, so, you know, but we definitely could calculate what that cost would be. So, you're talking high roots of dollars additional to do this. We did talk about, with your management, advanced control options. So, every overhead and new fixture that you get, it does get a photocell, so that's the basic control, turns things on and off at dusk and dawn. But we did look at some other options with manual fixture controls, which is basically a feature on the overhead in particular, and it's part of the fixture, and it's a selector switch for adjusting light levels. It's in the fixture. You manually have to do it, so it's not something that you do frequently, but it's more of a maintenance troubleshooting tool, that if you have an intersection where for some reason you want to get a little more light a year down the road, you can do that, or if there's another area where you need to adjust it down a little bit, you can do that. But you do that very infrequently, but it's a low-cost, flexible option to put on the fixture, so we provide it as an option. We did, two municipalities did this in round one. They used manual controls.
Do you generally set these lights at 100% or you...
No. What we do is if, so, for example, we use a 38-watt LED on your local roads. Okay, so that's the design level that we want. So, if we do manual fixture controls, we actually order 53 watt and dial it back right out of the gate. The installer does it actually to that 38-watt level, so you essentially get it to the design level you want, but then you have like 20% upside and like 50% downward capability. Again, it's not to make, we don't want an unstandardized system. You'd want a standardized system, but if you, for one reason or another, need to tweak something down the road, you have that flexibility.
How much of a cost difference? It's kind of minimal?
Yes. Yeah. It's less than $20 a watt to the fixture.
Okay.
And there's no additional installation cost. It's just actually part of the fixture. We also looked at network control systems, which are a good option also. They, and frankly, we only had one municipality do this in round one, but it's because of the cost, and you have a much lower cost system this time. I'm not saying that it's cheap, but it's still much lower cost than round one. This connects all the lights into a network that they can all be controlled from a cloud-based system, and you really don't play with light levels that much, but what you do do is you get reports on outages on a daily basis, and they send an email to whoever that needs to go to. They give you reports on day burners, so when photocell fails and the lights are just left on and consuming energy. So, it's really from an asset management tool is usually what people look at, the network control systems. Here are the adders for those two, basically for the manual controls. This is a little unfair because I haven't changed the project cost yet, but this will be an adder to that project cost. It's about $12,000 adder for the manual controls. It's about $55,000 adder for the network controls. If you do the network controls, you actually get to go to another PICO tariff, which saves you some additional money. They just created that this year, and it's a smart lighting tariff, so they're encouraging use of these network controls, so you would get about $2,600 in annual savings.
And the other option would be no controls, if they're all just the 39 watts at 100%?
Yeah, well, you do get the photocell though. So, that's, yeah, so they still go on and off at dusk and dawn. Yeah, your third option is to just do that. I call that the base option. So, at some point, we will have to, if you move forward, we'll have to select a color temperature. We talked a little bit about this before. I could show you this chart, which tries to explain what the color temperatures are, and basically, you could choose between like 4,000, which is a pure white, or a warmer white, which is like this. I noticed another way to look at that, because these lights right up here, fluorescent grade for this. These are probably like a pure white, a 4,000K. These two fixtures right here, the ones in the middle are probably a little warmer, and they're more like 3,000K approximately. But the better way to tell is to look at some of your neighbors that have already done this, and that's the best way. We're using the exact same manufacturer of overheads as we did in round one. We didn't plan it that way, but they want it again on their own merits. And so, this is a list of all the different communities that did different color temperatures.
That's the right most complex. You can't read the top.
That's for decorative, so like four-sided colonials. So, this overhead is probably the most worth looking at. I know it's not really close, but there are some on here like Catat Square that actually mixed them. They did warmer in the local roads, in the residential areas, and they did a little whiter on the commercial major roads. So, this doesn't have to be decided at the moment that you decide to move on to construction. There's no price difference, and there's also no performance difference. They put out the same amount of light. It's just really a steady decision. So, let's look at the financial results. Okay, before I get into that high burner, let me just tell you that you're in a unique position because you are buying back your fixtures. Okay, so you currently don't own your fixtures. PICO owns them, and you're paying for the use of those fixtures. So, embedded in that tariff is not only the energy consumption and the tax fees of being on that pole, but you're also paying for maintenance, for them to maintain the system for you. Generally, not that, you know, they're utility, they're in a zero-sum game, they don't make profits, they basically charge what they feel they need to charge, but I will tell you this, that when we switch tariffs, your costs are going to go down considerably just by buying back. You have to buy them back, so you have to pay for that, but once you buy them back, and you'll see this in all your economics I'm going to show you, is that you save a ton on that. Yes, you do have to start maintaining those fixtures, but this is going to be an LED system where the fixtures have rated lives of over 30 years. They have 10-year warranties on the fixtures, and generally, the maintenance costs, you know, are in hundreds of dollars even for a mature system to a third-party contractor per month. So, so really, you're unburdening yourself from a lot of cost by doing this buyback. It's very well worth it. All the buyback communities have the best paybacks on these projects because it's just such a good, good opportunity to combine that buyback with a like number. So, I'm not going to go through every number, obviously, here, but I just want to mention that this top chart, this represents a difference between, if you were to do nothing and we just adjusted your inventory with PICO based on what we found in the audit, we actually found more fixtures than what they think you have. So, this right out of the gate, you, if you were to adjust that inventory, you'd be paying $12,000 more a year on your streetlights, and that happens. You know, inventories just don't get updated. A lot of times, information is given to PICO, and it doesn't get updated on their side. It doesn't matter how we got to this point, it's just, this is a factor that I adjust into all the savings calculations because we have to get the inventory correct. But then, all these options are different combinations of project scopes that you could do. So, for example, overhead only, you can see that the savings are about $23,000 per year. Here is your buyback cost. So, it only costs $7,000 for you to buy back all those overhead and the other fixtures that are on the streetlight bill. Okay? So, you pay that $7,000. You'd now own those fixtures, which includes the arm, the wiring, and the fixture, and in the case of a decorative, it includes the pole. And you can see here the material costs and cell costs. So, after all the costs are included, less a rebate that you get from PICO, the net cost is $89,000 for the overheads only. So, we look at other combinations here, which you can take a look at, but we generally kind of landed on a couple options that we think may be of interest. One is to essentially, because you have the great economics of the buyback, we looked at, okay, what if you did everything that I showed in the previous scopes? That would generate about $50,000 in savings per year, and the net cost would be about $158,000. That's only a 3.2-year payback, so that's very attractive. And then, we looked at, because you do get some energy savings with the network control system, if you were to do the buyback and do everything plus the network controls, it does jump a fair amount up to 213, but you have higher savings over $50,000, and that's a four-year payback with financing, which is kind of the general assumption. We showed you the paybacks without financing also, so that just takes up the interest of us.
You mentioned the cost of the lights per se, but what, the network control is $55,000. What percentage of the total would that be as the highest handle we had all?
I'm sorry?
Like, the $55,000 for the network control system?
Yeah.
What's the total that you're using to calculate that payback period?
The 213 is the, that includes the network controls. So, we jumped from 158 up to 213. Now, these are all...
The savings per year are in the third column, so obviously, it goes from $49,000 a year in savings to $52,000. So, it's $3,000 a year, $2,700 a year in savings for those network controls.
Yeah, so, if you're trying to get to the percentage, yeah, it's about a 25% increase. In round one, it was 100% increase. So, that's why so few people waited.
Around five years.
So, another way to look at your financials is with cash flow. So, we took the, we're showing two examples here. This is the first green bar example, and then I'm going to show you the second one of the second cash flow. Here is, basically, the outlay is a little bit more than I showed on the previous slide. You're actually outlaying about $165,000 for the, doing everything without the advanced controls, but that's higher because you get the rebate later. So, the previous number was net of the rebate. If you took that and that, you'd actually come up with the previous slide's number. But this shows you all the savings. You actually don't get a maintenance cost savings because now you're paying for maintenance where it was embedded in the bill before, but this is highly, much escalated in terms of the savings because of that whole tariff. So, these are all the total savings, and then what we did is we looked, we actually did a capital contribution where you could use liquid fuel funds to pay for the overheads. You can only use it for the overheads. So, we, and we need to firm up exactly what that number is that you can apply because we're still talking to PennDOT about that, and they have their process for approving kind of separate and parallel to ours, but we're estimating it's going to be around $78,000 that you could put towards that. So, you'd only be financing the 85, and with the interest rate and the financing is through our program, so it actually is from Del Valle and is going through the counties as a conduit, so you can give subject to your appropriation loan as opposed to a general obligation loan, so it really looks more like a municipal lease. And essentially, these are your loan payments over five years, and you can see that your savings outweigh your loan payments, so you actually are in positive cash flow with the project early on, and then it's really good once you're done with the loan. So, this project, the net value after you've paid for it, even with financing, generates $834,000 in net value over 20 years. And then, quickly, we'll just look at the, this is with the network controls, so kind of the same story, a higher project cost, still paying for the overheads with the liquid fuel funds, same term, same interest rate. Loan payments, obviously, are a little bit higher, but your savings are also a little bit higher, so this generates $778,000 in net value over 20 years. Both projects would be about a 30-day calendar period to do the installation, is our estimate at this time. So, I do want to note that we use a very conservative interest rate in our analysis. We're actually using a 20-year rate. Now, you will close with all the other municipalities, so even though you're, I show a five-year term, the rate may actually be a 10-year term because there's a whole, all the other municipalities, we're going to end up with an average term essentially for the financing pool. But good news is, interest rates, the curve is very flat, so the difference between the 10 and the 20 is not very different, but we use a 20-year. There are some additional fees from Del Valle origination fees, so these are in, you know, a couple thousand dollars, but we think we have it covered in our much higher interest rate than we're assuming. So, but we just want to be fully transparent to say this is how the financing pool works. There are some fees associated with it, but our cash flows are very conservative. Probably, we're going to do much better on the interest rate and cover of all these costs otherwise. And again, this is only, we're talking thousands, a few small thousands of dollars. So, your next steps are to make a decision what scope of work, if any, do you want to do, not only for which fixtures, but whether to do controls or not. And basically, we prepare a resolution for you that continues our services on to those three and four, moves you into construction. There will be a construction contract with Armor directly that we've developed and prepared, so that would all occur after the project decision. But if you're financing even a portion of the project, we're looking for a November closing for financing, then we would just implement all the construction contract order materials, and then, we're not quite sure where everybody lands in the construction schedule. We have 26 municipalities, so it's, really, we're kind of doing it in the order of approvals is generally how we're doing it. We did load up the non-financing municipalities first just because they have less to do and they can have decisions well before the November closing. And we also take care of all the PICO bill updates for you. You don't have to do that. We take care of the rebate applications, so everything's handled as part of this. So, I can answer any questions, and then your next step would just be decide what you want to do. So, very close open.
Other questions? The retrofit in the decorative fixtures, is it possible to have a prototype to look at before we decide?
Absolutely. I highly recommend that. I ordered in samples from that manufacturer so we could do a trial installation for you.
And then, do you want that light?
I would just need to confirm what lamping it currently is because I have all these different options, and then, you're currently a white light source. You have a, that's a metal halide, so we don't have to get into the color temperature issue. So, I would probably just show you a 4,000K, which would be the equivalent light output, so we can work on that, and I could get you a sample. And actually, Armor, our installer, has been installing some trial installations in other communities. Yep.
So, I'm interested in the warmer color. Like, I just, I have seen the LED conversions, and it can convert an office space like into a Home Depot or, like, the feel changes so... a Home Depot, or like, the feel changes so quickly. So I'm just curious if we could see, I don't know, I mean, the decorative lights, it looks like the fixture you showed us is kind of more in your face. So I just wonder if it would really change the feel of the hotel.
We could, we could do two trials, and we could do a 4,000 and a 3,000 K, and you could look at them. Now, that would be for the decorative fixtures. For the coveheads, I really recommend you go to another community to check it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I would not recommend doing a trial. It's just much more expensive. It's much better to go to another municipality that's one color temperature or another and look at like 10 in a row to get a really good feel of what the road's going to look like. Yeah, but the decorative's, we definitely could do a trial with two different colors.
I wrote down White Marsh has $4,000, yes, $3,000. There was a whole list. Is that listed in the detailed proposal? Oh, so we have some other reasons.
So I was wondering about, sorry, sincere name. I was wondering about the energy cost savings for the network controls. It looks like in the graphs that are here, they're listed as the same energy cost savings with and without the network controls, but you mentioned that there were network cost savings.
I thought that would not be picked out with the network controls.
Well, if you go to, I mean, I'm just looking at the last 24, slide 23 and 24.
Oh, you're looking at the cash flows?
Yeah, you've got $50,528 here. Let me go to the next one.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry, I have to, I would have to update that. So the, yeah, let's see.
Presumably, the controls do something.
Yeah, the 5528, so actually, this is a good direction to make a mistake, not that you want to have any mistake. That's without the controls, the 50,528. It should be 53.
Okay.
So that, on this slide, these should all be 53.
And no controls, manual controls are the same, they're operational costs, like there's no savings.
They're very, very close, yeah.
I mean, would you anticipate also a maintenance savings? You said there were maintenance advantages to having those controls in?
Yeah, so here's, we don't try to calculate it because it just, you end up debating it more, and frankly, the manufacturers don't give us good information on it, but we do know for a fact that when I buy a bigger LED and dim it, anytime you dim LED, you get longer life out of it. So there would be a life benefit by doing any controls, either the manual or the network, because I've upsized the fixture and I'm dimming it right out of the gate to the design level that I want. So I didn't factor in any maintenance savings, but they would be there.
The cost for the bigger LEDs is the same as the cost of the smaller?
No, but I've got it factored into the control costs. Yep.
But if the, sorry, the controls, over a 20-year life of these lights, I mean, it seems like one piece of complicated equipment that is more likely to require IT support or operating, subscription, maintenance service.
So from a cost standpoint, there are annual fees of $2 per node, which is what's on each fixture per year. I've, I've put in 20 years of those fees. So from a cost standpoint, I've got the cost in there for 20 years.
Then there's sort of the reality of the boots on the ground.
Yeah, sure.
How many hours do they spend dealing with network controllers versus manual controls with the DOT?
Yeah. It's, it is another component. It's weighing the pros and cons of the benefits. I would say generally, there's a million of these nodes from this one manufacturer that we're using installed. It's not super sophisticated technology. You do get a 10-year warranty on the node, so at least for 10 years, you're not worrying about the product cost for it. So generally, it's, and I would anticipate you'd have a single gateway is what we're estimating. We'd have to do that study, but you're fairly small, and it is a mesh network, so they all kind of communicate to each other to expand the network. So, you know, possibly, at this building, you could have one gateway, and it doesn't even have to feed into your IT system. It can hit that gateway and it can go cellularly to the cloud, so.
Who's the manufacturer of the network?
SimCon. It's C-I-M-C-O-N. And it does not access your system. It's a standalone system, so there's no crossover security issues with somebody going through a light fixture to get into your financial system or anything like that. It's, you know, it's a separate system.
Okay. All right.
You said it takes about 30 days to install. How much disruption is there within the during that time?
Very, very little. These, you know, Armor, they do maintenance servicing all the time, so it's basically, they come up to a fixture, they change it out. One of their good techs does up to 40 of these a day. So he's only at each location for just a moment, just moving right down the street doing upgrades. We had, I will tell you, we had zero, we had, you know, we had a handful of issues that we had to deal with in round one, you always do with any project. I don't recall hearing one complaint about disruption within a community. So these are professionals that do this work all the time.
When you say the parts are warranted, is it labor and parts or just the?
The labor is only one year, which is traditional for any construction contract, but the parts have a 10-year warranty. So for the first year, there's any issue, you just call Armor, and they would take care of anything. It doesn't matter, you don't even have to know if it's a product issue or a workmanship issue, they just got to fix it.
And as long as you've been doing this or that you know of this kind of a project, is there a community that was first, that's jumped in as part of the first round of LED lighting in the state, in the area that we could talk to about their maintenance issues or their concerns and what had to be worked out over time so that we could have some frame of reference?
To understand their growing pains with it, or, I mean, I would go to, I'd go to the round one. I'd go to the round one people. They've been sitting with these systems for three years, most of them. At least for two years.
Okay.
Yep, and they're your neighbors, and, you know, they're going to talk honestly, you know, how the system's working.
I'll open up any public comment or questions while we have Mr. Fuller here.
So I've been involved in a number of these conversion projects at work, and they're almost always too bright at the end. The most notable example is the Palestra at Penn, which is like way too bright now.
I've seen that.
So I would really encourage you guys, if you do this, to at least get the manual system so you can tune it back a little bit. The smart system scares me a little bit because these cloud companies go out of business, and then you're stuck with something. Unless there was like a manual override on the cloud system, I would steer clear of that. Because the warranty is only as good as long as the company's in business.
Yeah, I mean, just to answer that one question, if for some reason that node failed, it fails, or let's say it's not supported anymore, or whatever the case is, it fails to the standard photocell capability.
I need the ability to adjust the brightness.
Right.
Which I lose.
Yeah, on that note, I just want to say you're not going to be adjusting brightness very often, it's just going to be more for troubleshooting purposes. And let me just address the light levels. I definitely agree. I mean, most people, I would say the majority of people, when they see an LED upgrade, are going to say it looks brighter. Some will view that as positive, some will view that as negative. We have a balancing act in the design community to, for roadway lighting, to make sure we get the appropriate amount of light on the road, the right illumination for safety purposes, but we also don't go too far, and it's a balancing act, and, you know.
It's right in front of my house.
Sure.
So that's why we're going to keep power.
Yeah, yeah, there are, if, what we, what we tend to do is we say install the system, you know, if there's specific concerns that pop up, number one, we say wait a couple weeks so everybody can adjust to it because it is an adjustment. If the concern is still there, it's not all about light levels. Sometimes there are houseside shields that can be used, there's other shielding methods that can be used to, you know, handle situations if you need to. And I would say, even with the much larger communities that had thousands of fixtures that I worked closely with, you know, we may have had 20 or 30 kind of citizen interests areas that we looked at, and some of them could be resolved, some, they were the appropriate lighting for the application, but many of those, we threw in a houseside shield or did something, and it helped the situation.
Any questions from the public?
Hi, I'm Jerry Lyons, I'm the Borough in Hanson Court. Are the lights at Hanson Court going to be involved in this LED program?
I don't know every individual fixture, so if they are part of the ownership of Narbith, Narbith, then yes.
Not the ones that we currently take care of. Mr. Lyons?
Thank you. Is now the right one?
He had a question about lights upfront.
Yes. If you have lights, I'd love to hear. We have certain streetlights, and we have two lights at the entrance of Hanson Court. And I've got some, if I may, council members and mayor.
Which is really good. Are they private?
No, we are not private. We are not a private street. It's not, it's not an association. Hanson Court is not, there's no association in our deeds. I'm not an original owner, but my understanding is that when Hanson Court was built, so when Hanson Court was built, there were no lights at the entrance to Hanson Court. And I have one of the original drawings that shows that there were no lights there. I've spoken to, I think we have about two original owners. And there were no lights in the original drawings for Hanson Court. I went up to Montgomery County, and I've been in touch with people at the borough here. No one seems to have the initial plan for Hanson Court. And for some reason, for the past 40 years, the residents have paid for the lights at the entrance. Well, the lights are starting to fall apart, and we have a lot of new residents on Hanson Court, a lot of younger people. It's not in their deed. They don't know why they're paying for it. They don't want to pay for it. And I'm here to plead to you to pick up these lights at the entrance to Hanson Court, and I think this program would be a great idea. As for the pillars, the pillars are starting to fall apart. You can knock those down and put up two extra lights, and with all the savings the borough will have, I mean, you know, with two LED light posts, and it's a safety issue as well because we're right on Montgomery Avenue. In fact, that, from what I understand, that's why the builder put up these two lights because the borough wouldn't do it 40 years ago when Hanson Court was built. So, you know, I'm just here to pitch to you that, you know, I'd ask you to seriously consider taking over the two lights at the entrance to Hanson Court, involving them in this LED program, and taking control of the two light posts, stucco light posts right at the entrance. They're actually not on anybody's property, but for some reason, you know, the residents at Hanson Court have been footing the bill for 40 years, and we're at the point, like I said, with new people, we're not going to have the money, the lights are going to go out, and it's going to be a safety issue.
So I know you've contacted the borough office about this. Let us get a little information from the borough side of sort of where everything stands, and then I think by the time we get to a decision for these lights, we'll have a decision created.
I appreciate, yeah, Ed Hartman was very nice, you know, came in, he spoke to us, not to our satisfaction, but he spoke to us.
Well, his job is to collect information. Our job is to make decisions.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I had two additional questions.
Okay.
How do you measure the correct level of brightness for an individual light?
Go with that one first. Okay, so generally, what I should say is that this project is really a retrofit. Some consider it even a maintenance type of project. It's a one-for-one replacement. So the way that we, in the design community typically design is we design to an application, so an entire street, or this is not that situation. What we're looking to do is to meet or exceed what you currently have. So when we look at the LED system that we're going to, we're looking to what would typically be used or should be used on that roadway in old technology, and we make sure that the LED fixture performs as good or better than that.
So if you do that in the design aspect, you're not doing that after, so following the installation, someone has a light later and says, this light is the correct brightness for.
You will see that we're using a 38-watt LED on local roads in every one of the 26 municipalities. So it's completely standardized, and that's backed by design, and it's also backed by, which I put a lot of weight on as a designer, because we don't have to design to a standard because PICO gave you these fixtures, they're spaced further apart than they ever would be if you did a new construction or a new design. So we're stuck with what we've got there. But basically, I put a lot of weight on the fact that we installed 25,000, and yes, you get some, you get a lot of comments on both sides, too bright, that's good, or it's bright, it's good, it's too bright, it's bad. You get a little bit about that, but generally, really, we have very few comments, percentage of the whole 25,000 in terms of any issues.
So my second question, it sort of leads to the spacing, but also, you mentioned light pollution reduction. So how do these coveheads focus or aim the light in a way that A, reduces light pollution, and B, maybe, you know, have the option for sort of wide angles so that you can get better light coverage given the widespread of them.
Right, so first of all, with your coveheads, you have a lot of these sag lenses, and when that lens sags, the light comes down, hits the lens, and it goes in a lot of different directions, increasing optical. So there are measurements for that, and one is called a bug rating, and the U in the bug is up light level. Well, these have, the LEDs have a bug rating, the U is zero. So there is 0% night, 0 light output, 9% above, or at the 9% level or above the fixture. Yeah, so in terms of, the old technology did have distribution types, you know, there's always been a Type 2 distribution, which is the traditional roadway distribution. LEDs also have a Type 2. They generally, you can control LED lighting better, so it does the same Type 2 distribution, but it has better cutoffs on it, and where you want better cutoffs is behind the fixture. So Type 2 is really trying to get, it puts a little bit of light on the sidewalk, but generally, it's putting the light out on the street, and it does a better job, and does it more cleanly than the older technology.
So I guess my question is, because I know they have a tighter sort of cutoff, which can be very beneficial, but when your spacing is further apart, then it's more likely that you end up with sort of darker areas at the midpoint.
It may be perceived as darker, but just because of the fact that the old technology kind of just makes you have more light.
Okay.
So the perception may be that I've got maybe pools of light of, because there are more cutoff with the LEDs, that's really not the experience, and that's another reason to go to another community. They're not spaced obscenely far apart, and actually, yours are not in the community. I mean, generally, I felt yours were on the closer side on average than a lot of other communities that I've seen, and you see that with maybe more historic or older communities. So I don't think you're going to see a lot of dark spots between the fixtures anymore than what you're seeing now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Got a lot. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fuller.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Yep.
We'll move to committee reports. 6A, finance and administration report was given to me, my counsel Rickards, which revealed there was no report. Public safety, 6B.
We give our report at the last combined meeting, and we'll be meeting again and updating, having a conversation. I'm sorry, we'll be meeting again on October 9th at 8:00 AM in this building, in this room, and we will be discussing budgets, 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 dollars, dollars, dollars.
All right. Thank you. Infrastructure?
We met on September 27th at 8:00 AM in this room, and we'll meet again on October 25th at 8:00 AM in this room. Michelle Penau will give our report.
Okay. Right before we get to public comment, I'm just going to.
She's going to get us, she's going to get the report.
Go ahead.
That's right, I'll try. We heard from our director of public works. He's doing an awful lot of work other than what you can see, and you can already see a lot, including school painting and park maintenance. He's working closely with our environmental advisor, commensal on stormwater management, with the shade tree commission. He's working with the recreation board, he's working with the public safety committee, giving the event communications. So just wanted to acknowledge all that effort and pass along to the public at large, the issue of the problem of trash in the parks, which Mr. Harmon brought to our attention. It's the cleanup of trash left behind in parks and events and groups that use the parks is very, very time consuming. It's actually quite an expense. And so he's trying to work with community groups, but I wanted to pass the information along, if you're listening, and you are hosting an event or you are in parks and generating trash, please clean up, it really helps the borough a lot, and it helps our public works department get there, get to the bigger projects. We had a borough manager report, and we talked about the streetlights. We have final approval from Montgomery County on bike infrastructure grant requirement, and so we had a couple of months before probably we can start to see this installation, that installation begin to take place. The greenhouse gas inventory that we approved under the ICLI program has begun, and by the end of our interim semester, they'll have quantified power emission sources. We talked a little bit about downtown land development projects, review, the Narbith Abbey Bridge replacement, and some other, we did an operating budget update, but I'll leave that to the borough manager. The chair of our shade tree commission, Rick Charlie, is presenting to us, the shade tree commission has been working hard on overhauling our shade tree ordinance and Commission has been working hard on overhauling our Shade Tree ordinance and have been proposing some additional measures that they would like council to be considering in the coming months to protect trees in the right way specifically. At this point, where we left it is they're going to be sort of briefing us a little bit more specifically on the intent of these changes, and we will need to consult with our solicitor, but this issue will be coming back. This was the first presentation, he gives a lot of information. But we're not going to act on it just yet. And then we discussed the Windsor Avenue project, which has come back again. Our Borough Manager, Mr. Metrick, reviewed for us the sort of history of where we are with that, and noted that we're at the point where we need to sort of make a decision, we will be needing to make a decision about whether to proceed with Phase 2 of that project. And we had a lot of discussion, I don't want to try to recap all of it. Where we left it is that the Infrastructure Committee on the whole thinks that we should budget for Phase 2 of the project, but we wanted to bring it to workshop meeting and have some discussion at the table. I'm looking into find, I have some notes here. Because I just rewatched most of the August 21st presentation that John Yurk from McMahon gave us in August, to sort of refresh my mind about where we are. Because I think that there's some questions about whether we need, as council, to provide more guidance or more specific guidance to McMahon in order for them to develop Phase 2 in a way that's efficient and that meets our needs, or whether they're in a position to move forward. That's one question. Another question you might want to discuss, you would like to sort of have some discussion about at the table, is whether or not we want to move forward with Phase 2 only with the traffic engineer that has completed Phase 1, or whether it would be appropriate to look at the action of those for Phase 2 and bid them out to other firms, other engineering firms, or other design firms. So Phase 1, as you might remember, was the community outreach, identifying visions and priorities. Phase 2 is to develop a plan. And there were four scenarios that were presented in Phase 1. And Mr. Yurk reviewed them for us in August. There was prioritize bicycle mobility, prioritize traffic flow, prioritize parking, prioritize parking and bicycles. And I think that the way that they came to look at this was, well, there was, because two of those categories got the most votes, so we're kind of going to look at those. Prioritize bicycle, I'm just reviewing what he said in August. Prioritize bicycle mobility was about 40%, and people said that was their top priority. Prioritize traffic flow is about 30%. Those top two vote getters, he noted, entail some conflicting priorities. So for example, if you prioritize bicycles, you would want to give a one-way traffic flow with probably a protected bike lane. If you prioritize traffic flow, you would probably have two-way traffic and no protected bike lane, they'd be a shared bike lane. Both of those priorities seem to preference parking, support parking on one side versus both sides, so that much they've sort of pulled out, looking at parking on both sides. But what I think they would be coming back to us, in addition to a range of other issues that will be addressed regardless, involving intersections, safety, some sightlines, stormwater management, some other things they would like to give recommendations on. He showed us sort of two scenarios nonetheless, that they would be probably developing plans for both, in one-way traffic flow with a protected bike lane and two-way traffic flow plan. That he showed us sort of a cross-section of both. And in looking at his presentation in August, I believe that they would be moving forward to probably develop plans for both of those scenarios. That's my understanding, at this point, if we move forward in that direction. And I wonder if that's something that we do want to engage them in developing both of those scenarios, if that's efficient, or if we would be better served by making some more decisions before we give them, before we move on to Phase 2. Just in the interest of basically reducing our engineering costs and sort of simplifying our decision. So I think that that more or less sums up what he talked about in August. I mean, there was a lot of other detail. He talked about what they're going to do is give us initial, initially for short-term solutions as an initial matter in Phase 2, and then look at long-term solutions further down the road, for budget reasons, for reasons of having more flexibility in terms of the approach that we take. And for reasons of just sort of speed of implementation. So I notice the question is, that's what I heard in August. Now we're at the position where we're being told, well, we need to sort of move forward, we're wanting to move forward with that soon. Is this something that council is generally comfortable with, moving forward with Phase 2, as I've just outlined it, which is my understanding, what Mr. Yurk had said in August? Or do we think we need to give him more guidance? Give either the command more guidance and information before they do their own plans, or provide a more detailed set of goals, priorities to bid out to other providers? To sort of get thoughts of council generally before we move forward with the decision?
Counselors?
I guess I'll speak next. I assume that it came with traffic and protected bike lanes, both in the two-lane, two-direction scenario and single-lane scenario, because Windsor Avenue is two, both two lanes and single lane.
This is the thing, like I just rewatched it, that's not what he was showing.
So again, can you just restate what he? Because he showed protected bike lane and one-way travel.
That's right.
Which doesn't really answer the question if, because Windsor Avenue is two lanes, is currently two lanes and one-way. So if you, if they just develop a one-way scenario with protected bike lanes, then they haven't answered the question about what do we do with part of Windsor Avenue that's currently two-lane, two-directions.
That was.
And so I was trying to wonder, wouldn't it be of use to us to know, is the single lane the whole, all of Windsor Avenue, even a realistic scenario for us to consider? Or do we really just have, do we really have to work with the existing conditions of two lanes for the first five or six blocks to the west, and then one lane? And how do those two, and how do those two different kinds of traffic situations work together? So that's why I kind of thought we needed more information. I thought they would have answered that question, is there feasibility in doing one lane?
I think feasibility was, would be part of Phase 2, I mean, that was sort of its initial, he said, Phase 2, developing a plan, the first step was assess feasibility, solution, assess impacts, and then develop a plan we can implement. So they haven't really gotten to the assessment.
So I think we're going too far to ask them to develop a protected bike lane design if we don't know if one lane, the whole way, is feasible yet.
I completely agree.
If it's feasible, then I'm saying, go for it, let's, let's help them.
My concern, and I asked this question here, is unless you have done an analysis of traffic generation and traffic flows and how everyone's lives would change, I don't think we can put on the table that we're going to make Windsor one-way, all the way. That's the, that's the big thing that is going to change people's lives, and we need community buy-in. Once you create that, and there is buy-in, then a whole series of options sort of easily trickle down from that, that we can make policy decisions. To me, that's the next step, but I was concerned, because as the engineer, he didn't seem to feel like that was the next step. And I don't want to sort of, sort of know, and then an engineer feels very differently, but I have to be convinced, otherwise I'm involved.
I feel your concern. Yeah, I think that, no, I agree, and I think that's some of the questions I actually sent to Sean after that meeting, I said, did I miss something? So there was a round of questions that we kind of went, that Sean asked, and I said, well, if we're talking about a cost, and then there's a one-way impact, and we've already spent on a budget for traffic engineering, how do we make the decision for the whole piece? And then going up to Meeting House and trying to get to Montgomery, and so what are we really looking at? And while I think this is an important project, and this is a future project, and this is an impact project, we really have to think about, we really have to be sure about, there are pieces that aren't maybe answered for everyone.
Any other thoughts?
Can we, can we give the engineer a list of streets?
Right.
You know, because he seemed kind of overwhelmed at all. What's the scope of the traffic study that he needs to understand? Could we just identify Windsor, South Norbert, Haverford?
I, see, I'm also confused by that, because I know, I'm so familiar with the software that they use, it's not a big borough to run sort of first, second, and third-order effects of that configuration change with tens of thousands of sort of simulated trips. And that's what the software does. It's not sort of a simulation, you know? You know?
Should we just request that? Just say, okay, your next step is tell us what happens if this goes one-way, is this feasible or not?
You take all that traffic that's currently going this way on Windsor, and you push it into the downtown, or you push it, you know, how does, how do things change?
Sure. But it also speaks to the budgetary concerns, we are out of traffic dollars in 2019. You know, are we kicking the can to 2020? Is there, and how do we?
January 1st isn't that far away.
No, 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 well, that's what I'm saying, like, is that okay with everybody as well? Is that the conversation we need to have as well, and saying like, we've spent this money already?
Cash budget bills in January.
Exactly, and that, you know, we need to obviously pass a budget and then move that forward into January in order to even have those pieces fit into us.
Does anyone have thoughts about that? About the budget part?
Your suggestion was that you didn't think it was a particularly complicated operation for them, so hopefully.
No, but they're going to charge us, you know, thousands of dollars.
Yeah. I mean, just to give them some interest as well, do the high-level traffic study.
Well, but this is, but if we just say we want this one piece before we make more decisions, we just say.
Well, just the traffic analysis?
Yeah.
We can ask for that. We need like a kind of a Phase 1A.
Yeah.
And then, and then before we go into Phase 2.
So let's get a quote.
For Phase 1A.
And then we can.
Right, just give them a number.
All right. So we have the next step. Go ahead, Michelle.
That was it for committee, but we had a very, we had a very meaningful public comment at the infrastructure meeting, and I believe we'll probably be having that, moving to that, hearing a reprise of the public comment about the Norbert Avenue Bridge. And I also wanted to ask our, I also wanted to ask our newest member of the Infrastructure Committee, Mr. Bush, if you would speak to the bridge, because you brought it up at our meeting two weeks ago. I want to give you a moment to speak about that now, during our committee.
Sure.
I could also hear the public comment, now doing it or after you speak.
Okay. Well, the, you know, the issue, there's several issues with the traffic over the bridge. I mean, I've been spending a lot of time there with my daughter, so I hear stories. There are, there are problems with large trucks that start going toward the bridge and then realize they're kind of trapped, and they can't go over the bridge, they can't make the turn into the parking lot. So they're caught in kind of no man's land. And some of the, some of the local merchants have been going out and directing traffic to get them back onto Haverford, like letting them back out. So there's, there's one problem with these trucks. There's another problem with vehicles that come up, they go toward the bridge, and then realize they can't go over it, and they make a U-turn. And when they're making a U-turn, they're really vulnerable to oncoming traffic. There, there's, there are some people who just know that they're not supposed to do it, and they go over anyway. That's, that's a tricky problem. And then the fourth major issue that I see is that the crosswalk for pedestrians, so right now, we, we set up this chute, this, you know, passageway for pedestrians and bikes to go over the bridge. But you have to cross, if you're going southbound, you have to cross over at the very foot of the bridge. And once again, the problem is sightlines. If cars are coming over the bridge, they don't have very good sightlines to see the crosswalks. It feels very unsafe. I mean, I don't know that there's been any actual accidents, but pretty much everybody who navigates that feels personally unsafe. I've done it. It makes me nervous. I know, so this is a concern that the Cycling Club has brought up with me, and it's a, you know, a problem I've had. So the Cycling Club has been working on an idea to make that portion safer. And I don't know, Kim, do you want to go over it? During public comment?
If you're the master of the plan, Kim?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm not the master of the plan. Okay. Kimberly Bezak, Norbert Cycling Club. I did come and give a comment very last minute, last week during Infrastructure Committee, because just about every single day, we're hearing from members of the bicycling community about close encounters that they're having on the bridge. The issue that we have been talking to the borough about for four months now, we've had four months of live design, is that there still is not a dedicated space for bicyclists to get from the north side of town to the south side. And so we're, we do, we see a lot of scofflaw cycling happening, because when the bicyclists are getting there, and if they're not familiar with the area, they're not quite sure where they belong. They don't get on the sidewalk, because traditionally, bikes should not be on the sidewalk. They travel on the roadway up to the barrier, and then from there, they're not quite sure what to do. So Jean Barak, who runs the Cycling Club with me, we put together, if you want to pass these around, sorry, our top six safety issues that we have with the current design. And we put together a second document with just a suggested, suggested revision that would create space for bikes without interfering with the current car flow. So when I came here last week, I was.
This is the second one.
Yeah.
Sarah, one for me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, shall we, oh, who's this?
That's fine, you know.
We're sharing the data.
Okay. Now we're not sharing, so I should, Page 2, Page 2. Yeah, Page 2, okay.
I've heard.
Thank you. So basically, when I came here last week, I was really doing my best to mask my anger, but I was so frustrated, because the day before, when I was traveling from South Norbert back to the north side on my bicycle, if I would have been one minute later, I would have encountered a car driving the wrong way over the bridge. It was, it was really frightening to me. You know, my thoughts around this bridge decision in May, I was really applauding the efforts of council for, for wanting to create a space for all users of the road. But in the spirit of the comprehensive plan, that's really thinking big and trying to prioritize people over cars, this is just a failed moment. I mean, it really is. We're not creating that space for bicyclists, and they're such a vulnerable user of the road. I feel like we, we just need to create a space for them. The sidewalk on the Marion side is in really awful shape. I've tried to push my very heavy cargo bike up that sidewalk. It's, it's an uncomfortable situation, especially when you're yielding to pedestrians. The curb cut on the west side sidewalk at the foot of the bridge by the little gym, we were told that was going to come, and has yet to happen. So again, bikes are even further limited in their options, even if they're trying to do the right thing, and they're hopping on that little gym sidewalk, and they get to the foot of the bridge, there's a very, very tall curb that's difficult to bump down, especially if you've got kid cargo. And then you're right there at the foot of the bridge. The other thing is, we, I asked Randy Waltermeyer, who works for Transportation Planning and Design, he is who Montgomery County Planning Commission tasked with helping create Bike Mako and a few other county plans. I, I've gotten to know him through my work with Bike Mako, and I just reached out to him, and I asked him to give it a look for me. I'm like, just give me a second opinion, let me know what you think. You know, his observation was, the chicane that we're seeing at the north side of the bridge, that is the whole reason why the traffic lane is on the wrong side, is not working. The video I showed him, it couldn't have been a more perfect demonstration. There was a huge truck coming over the bridge, and it was just flying over. It didn't even hit the brakes. And I was thinking, if someone would have been in that crosswalk, you know, it could have been a really scary scenario. So I think my point around all of this is, one of the core functions of our, our government is public safety. So I just really, I'm just begging you at this point, I'm losing sleep about it at night, like, let's make sure we're keeping all of the users of our road safe. If we've got a scenario that's only, that's benefiting most of the community, that's not going far enough. So it's not giving me very much hope at this point with the Windsor Avenue redesign. Just seeing the way that a very large and growing segment of our community has just been ignored in this design, it, it gives me some reservations about if we're actually going to see a true redesign of Windsor Avenue that is, is truly accommodating all the users of our community.
Thank you for submitting this. Fred, there were a few other things that we're not often able to discuss.
Yeah, so in regard to the other issues with the trucks and things, I would recommend that some more signs be put up. So I'd like to see, I think a sign at Haverford Ave saying, no large trucks, you know, to try to keep someone from getting onto that, getting into no man's land. And then another sign maybe saying, drop-offs and parking lot only, I'm not sure what it should say, that's something to indicate that, because right now, at Haverford Ave, there's no indication that the road is closed ahead, I don't think. There's a sign that says sidewalk stops, but I'm not sure there's a. There's a sign that says sidewalk stops, but I'm not sure there's a, I'm not sure there's a sign there that says.
There is a sign.
There is a sign, does that happen?
It does, it says, "One-way, bridge closed", something like that.
Alright, is that, maybe that's on the other side of the street, okay. I'm picturing wrong. And I, and I would say a, a "No U-turns" sign, uh, at the, at the entrance to the Little Gym parking lot, where the barrier is right now. I think those would stop some of the, of the problem that we're seeing. And then the proposal that Kim came up with, or that, you know, Kim worked with, uh, the planner to design, is to put flexible posts in the, starting at the barrier, um, your Little Gym parking lot, put flexible posts up to the bridge and then change the, uh, the chute, you know, to put that over on the other side. So basically, the, um, you know, the, the same amount of travel space on the bridge for cars versus pedestrians, just flipped on the side, the side flip. And then a protected space so that the bikes know where to go. It would also stop, it would be another way to stop U-turns from happening if there's posts in the road. It would sort of make the situation more clear and safer for the other users in that stretch.
When the traffic engineer originally proposed this chicane idea, we asked him, I remember asking specifically about this scenario. Could ask him, you know, so couldn't the bike and pedestrian lane be on the west side of the bridge, the Norbert side, and the travel lane be on the? And he, he promised that there were virtues to the chicane, which, which frankly never made sense to me. And, and experiencing it as pedestrian and bicyclist, still doesn't make sense to me. When I look at this plan that you drew, you know, you actually created the two options, you can see how the sightlines are better for pedestrians crossing. You know, there's, there's better sightlines for the cars heading north on. And so I, I guess I'd like to know, Aaron, um, you know, what the traffic engineer thinks of this scenario and why, you know, why, why, why that wasn't an option for us. I also would have to bet sign list, a one-way sign up front from the south to the north, because I also witnessed people confused there, can I go down this street in that direction or not?
There is a one-way sign.
There's not there, a one-way sign there.
There was.
There wasn't yesterday.
Well, it could be gone, but there wasn't in that plan that presented to us.
So that's, that would be my request as a neighboring council person.
Other council member thoughts?
Well, and I think the other thing is that there's, there is a chicane in the alternate design. It's just that it occurs just the foot of the bridge, which is really, I mean, as, as you get over the bridge.
Yeah.
Before you go downtown, which is probably a better place to slow cars down when they're already going uphill anyway, and they're probably gonna be going slow. And then there's sort of nothing to prevent them, they're already on the left side and just, it's a straight shot. I, my, 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 I mean, I spoke about, I, I echo what you said about when he first proposed his design. I thought, well, you know, I mean, my first thought was, well, look, this is, this is a lousy situation. No matter how you slice it, like, we're not gonna have a great solution because it's the bridge. Look at it, I mean, it's, it's narrow, the sightline's a bore.
Weird, it's.
Nonetheless, not looking at the solution, my thought was, not so much like this prioritizes cars or preferences cars, it really doesn't. It's inconvenient as a driver too, it doesn't really prioritize cars. It just ignores bicyclists for no real benefit to cars. So in my mind, I know I'm not a traffic engineer, but with respect, I just don't think it's a good solution. It's not so much that it's a car-centric solution, it's just not, I think, the best solution that we had.
I think it was, it was the best solution the engineer could propose. I'm excited that we have expertise in our community that could possibly suggest a better one. I've, I'd love to share this with the engineer and get feedback.
Yep.
But also make sure that that feedback is, is there anything here that we can't do? Right, this is a great idea, but like, tell me if anything here is illegal, because we all sort of have a general sense of this.
Sure, right.
Right, so tell us where we're going wrong, if we are. If we're not, tell us what else we're missing. But then we get back to a budgetary discussion because we are spent out. Unfortunately, this bridge delay is costing us money nickel and dime here and there. There's gonna be a couple thousand dollars in fees. There's gonna be highway time, there's gonna be cost to reconfigure, and I just want everyone to, like, I mean, it could. What, um, the original setup with the barrier, barriers, how much was that?
I don't have that on.
I think it was like eleven thousand.
Yeah, I have a comment on that note, which I don't know, would be helpful, but maybe for perspective. Back in 2011, the council, or 2012, the council had a vote whether or not to spend any money on repairing the bridge at that time, it had been condemned and was closed. You talked about whether to spend any money, and the council voted five to seven, or five to two, to, uh, to fund, I think, a $450,000 repair, something like that. If we hadn't done that, the bridge would have been closed all of this time, and we would have been saving money on repairs that we're currently having to, that we had to do anyway.
Yeah.
Hundreds, I, I don't know, we might have had $800,000 to distribute to the business community. But instead, we kept the bridge open. I, I don't know if that's a helpful comment, but, but, but we're, we're, we're spending more good money after money we spend in an effort to keep this bridge open for the sake of the business community and our residents who, who, who drive cars from the south side into the north side. It's really.
I know.
This is a very challenging situation, and it's been, that bridge has been part of the borough's conversation for 25 years. And I wasn't going to say this tonight, but I tried to call Sean the other day. I, um, a resident, explained to me very loudly, very clearly and distinctly, there are thoughts and opinions about closing the bridge and closing Wynwood Road, and having no way by foot or by car to go under the tunnel or over the bridge, or to go down Montgomery Avenue, get to where they wanted to go. And they were quite livid. And, uh, I understand that. We're a small place, there's a lot of traffic. And, and this bridge, a wrong way, John can tell you, Chief Gallagher can tell you, the number of people going wrong ways is just an epidemic. And Lower Marion has it too, they've explained to us what happens on their side as well. And, and we can combat that as best we can with, with officers and with tickets. We certainly do do that currently. But there, there is a point, and to Bob's point, this has been a painful and expensive conversation for years. You know, to go down, uh, Haverford Ave and under the tunnel and all the way around, I, I understand that that, that can be tough on a bike too. I think that, that, there's no good, no good option. It's the best worst answer we have, sir.
Okay, so Rob?
One comment, um, I, I was within 10 feet of a, of a collision, you know, driving myself from the south side over. And, um, someone coming the wrong way. So I think the current, my sense is that what's being proposed here could be even more safe for drivers as well as for bike.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Because the lane's in the right lane, you know, so why would someone come up the hill by Little Gym and then switch over to the left lane to drive, you know, that's counterintuitive. So I think that would dissuade people from going the wrong way. So in my view, this is safer for everybody.
So, so I'm hearing consensus that we should take this plan and I'm gonna actually suggest, Fred, maybe if you could, um, mark this up with your additional comments. And I think we all are in agreement that, that sort of is a masterwork to contribute to the office, to be passed on to the traffic engineer for evaluation. And that in two weeks, um, when we meet again, we can be given sort of a idea of whether it can move forward and if we can, different options, and what it would cost.
I'm gonna try to get this.
I'll bring it to Sean.
Yeah. Okay, okay, thank you. Um, I'll move to public comment. If anyone would like to comment. Ms. Bezek, you had maybe a last comment? This is your opportunity.
Sure, I'll just add that, which I forgot to add, sorry. In talking with Randy with TPD about this, uh, potential revision to the design, one benefit that he was explaining to me is that on the north side of the bridge, flipping the traffic lane to the normal side of the road would actually create what's called a lateral chicane. And what he was explaining to me is, as a car comes over the bridge, it would jog over to the left to avoid the parking lane. But then it would have to jog back to the right to, uh, avoid the flex-posted bike lane. So you would get what's called a lateral chicane, plus you would get the additional visual barrier flex posts that would further narrow the travel lane, which would help secondary benefit to slow down the cars even more. So, um, just adding that information.
Thank you.
May I just add one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I think in terms of cars that may be traveling the wrong way over the bridge, they're doing so intentionally, because it's very obvious that you're not supposed to go that way. And they're kind of, um, there's no, it's not a confusion thing, it's a deliberate, it appears to be in many instances, a deliberate, uh, situation. Just FYI, we have been issuing tickets, uh, to people based on photographs of cars going over the bridge, the license plate, if you can get a copy of a photograph of their license plate and identifying, um, you know, markers of the vehicle, please submit them to Chief Gallagher. And, and if we are able to, I am happy to, we are happy to issue a very expensive ticket that comes with multiple points if we are in that position to do so. We're happy to do that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, any other public comment? Mr. Ridgeway?
Ed Ridgeway, 155 Marion. I just want to say that from my recollection of the meetings and the discussions of this, this revised plan, that was the plan. That was the plan. There was no discussion of moving the traffic lane over to the left-hand side. And I was frankly shocked the day when I saw what, what had happened. Because it was pretty clear at that first meeting that it was gonna be on the other side. And then there was this discussion about the chicane, which, you know, may have some benefits, but had a lot of downsides that, that we're seeing. And I think to the mayor's point, that, you know, some of the people are just scofflaws. They're gonna do what they're going to do. People are gonna disobey law, but it is somewhat vague, I think. I don't think it is 100% clear. When you look up the hill, you see the, you see the, the direction to turn into the parking lot, and you also see the "Do not enter" sign, and it's kind of confusing. Does it mean don't turn into the parking lot? It's, it is kind of confusing, and if signage can educate the public, you know, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll move on to action items, uh, which actually is just a placeholder here to number nine on the agenda. I will take a motion to the UCC Board of Appeals. Who would like to, uh, do that? Councilor Tadman Mofa?
I'll make a motion, I said move, that's a resolution of 2019-024, establishing the UCC Board of Appeals. Thanks. Where is it? I'm sorry, I don't have it. Establishing the Norbert Borough.
UCC Board of Appeals.
UCC Board of Appeals.
Is there a second, seconded? So, uh, Mr. Metzger, could you give us some information on this?
Yeah, the UCC Board of Appeals hears appeals to decisions made by the building code official regarding application of the building code. So just like any law that we make, the legislation that we pass, there has to be an appeals process to, for persons to get remedy to an administrative ruling. So this is where you would go if you did not, did not agree with the ruling of the building code official. And we needed to pass this resolution to, to establish the UCC Boards of Appeals, even though the ordinance created, um, gave us, it gave council the power to do so. We needed this resolution to create it. And if I may jump ahead, the next resolution, uh, is to appoint members to that board. And this board would meet on an ad needed, as needed basis to consider, um, appeals, appeals and rulings.
What, what did we do for the past five weeks?
We had borrowed, um, the UCC Board of Appeals from Lower Marion Township. And we had one case come forward and the board in Lower Marion wasn't able to convene, and so that applicant deemed approval. It was sort of a no harm, no foul decision, but we wanted to establish this board in case we did run into a situation where there could be.
Is there a cost incurred, um, from our side?
No, there is a fee charge for the hearing that covers those costs.
Does the board have a solicitor or, does the board have a solicitor?
Are they required to have a solicitor?
I don't think so.
Did you say there's only one case where they met, or there's only one where there was an issue? I mean, how often does, would this board meet?
This board has been called to meet, uh, twice in the last eight years.
Okay.
And one was a very litigious, um, instance.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to number 10.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve of the resolution 2019-25, the appointments to the Boards of Commission of the UCC Board of Appeals.
Is there a second? Okay.
We were doing one more point specifically.
We were gonna talk about names.
Yeah, we gotta go for that, right?
So who, uh?
Second, I think we should appoint people. So we go for that and then we go.
And then we vote for the people?
Right, so the three individuals that applied, David Brower, James Cornwell, and Michael Johnson.
And Heidi Boys as an alternate.
And Heidi Boys as an alternate, which I'm turning the page. So then, if you take that as a friendly amendment, those are the names.
I think that as a friendly amendment, the move that the four names mentioned by council president should be approved for this board position.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I just wanted to say, we're gonna, we're gonna continue recruitment. These four individuals out of a surplus of, uh, urge to serve their local government, agreed to step up and serve this board where no others could. No others did come forward, and they ask that we keep recruiting in the event that we find other interested persons with these skills, architects, builders, people who know the building code, to replace them who want to serve on the board. So we'll keep doing that.
So noted.
But I thank you, I thank very much these people for stepping forward. It was a very big deal, I really appreciate it.
Do the terms need to be read aloud for?
Uh, sure, so as written, David Brower with a term expiring December 31st, 2020, James Cornwell expiring 2021, Michael Johnson 2022, and Heidi Boys expiring 2021. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, this is unanimous, signed. Congratulations, welcome to a new board. Let's see here, that is done. Just make a motion to amend the agenda, to add new and old business as the next action item.
I, I need that we amend the agenda to create a new and old business.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bush. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anyone have any new, well, start with old business. An old business? Or a new business? Do you have any new business? Oh, I thought.
I thought you were, yeah, I thought, yeah.
Okay.
I have an old and a new business coming up.
Sure.
I just think we all need to think for a little bit, not at this moment, not to discuss at this moment, but there's definitely a tension in this community between the idea that, um, the council and the community depend upon experts to provide us with expert solutions to our residents' issues, concerns and issues. And then there's also a time I see that there's often a need for the residents be able to consider in way and participate in the solutions that the experts are creating for our community. And I, I just, I just think we really need to find, strategically find some kind of middle ground where we're listening to the residents in real time as we're, as we're listening and respecting that we have experts providing us with expert solutions. And I think this, this is a case, you know, case study here, because we knew at the time this was happening that the residents were not being listened to. I was aware of that, and I was asking, why aren't, you know, why isn't the traffic engineer meeting with the residents? And we're told, well, the traffic engineer has a special expertise, can't really. But actually, the residents have a lot of expertise in, they can provide observations about walking around, biking around, driving around this community in particular. And I, and I just, I just wanted to say, I think we need to think about that. I particularly found this frustrating.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, I have a couple of items. I'll start with the most complex one first. The Norbert Planning Commission, uh, is meeting tomorrow night, they currently have an empty agenda. This is exciting, because I don't think they've had an empty agenda in 15 years. So the time has come for council to look at a number of high-level items and, um, think about and make a decision, because council tells the planning commission, that's how it's structured, sort of what they should be working on, for them to come back to us with recommendations. And I did discuss with Mr. Bressi sort of his thoughts, and I'll sort of share the high-level ones with you and get a sense that we can think about this and decide in two weeks. Doesn't necessarily mean this for tomorrow. One is, it seems like the Historic Preservation Commission is, is ready to have something reviewed by the Norbert Planning Commission. That is the work that they've been doing with Corey Kegarize. Kegarize, and, um, that is something that the planning commission can review and look at it as it relates to our zoning. as it relates to our zoning code and whether changes need to be made, whether sort of tie all the dots together. That, Todd considered that to be, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but sort of a low-hanging fruit, next step that could sort of come in, go out and we could check something off of our, our list because this, this has been a large project that's been going on for some time. The other area of interest is really another new close look at the 5A district and, um, sort of reevaluating that and looking at the kinds of development that could happen there with current rules and whether, you know, sort of, whether that should change based on, you know, current market forces and trends and the kinds of development we're seeing in other areas. That was another area that seemed to be, uh, if we, we sort of don't do it now, there's opportunity for applications to come in and to miss some opportunities there. The third, um, we've been talking with, uh, Solicitor Walco about the SALDO. Um, the bulk of the work product needs to come from Solicitor Walco. Uh, that's an opportunity for us as a council to maybe give that direction that we're now ready to sort of spend those dollars and look at where we are in our legal budget, um, to get that ready for the Planet Commission to do a review. But what Mr. Bressi indicated was that what he would like to do is have the opportunity to have the Planet Commission look at sort of a lot of different ordinances, uh, what we have currently in shade tree, what we have in zoning, what we're doing with SALDO and, um, in some ways work with the EAC to make sure that those things are all tied together and are effectively helping us to address environmental issues, stormwater issues, et cetera. That each of them is an important piece, but unless someone's threading them all, um, they can tend to operate in isolation from each other. That's sort of a suggested order as well as items. And there's other things if we want to dig deeper into other items, or if some people in this room, at this table have other sort of high-priority items on their list, we can talk about that.
Just for clarifying, is that the order he felt that should be addressed?
It was.
If I, uh, just, uh, I just want to re, uh, emphasize what you said, our downtown district is, is very precious to this community and we're already going to have some significant growth and change in, in the coming years, uh, in, in that district. We should envision what we would like in that district then and how, what would feel right to this community and start plan, making plans that are appropriate for that whole area. Uh, and rather than, you know, chasing the bus, let's get ahead of it and, and plan it ahead of time.
Any thoughts, councilmembers? That sort of makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to tell Todd, yes, that sounds good, but I don't want to move too quickly.
No.
I have a question about, do, does our plan, does our plan, the state's contract with the county expire at the end of this year?
One per year.
We have one in a year on it so they can completely help us. Well, Aaron, is there, is there a way to tie in the, this, the offer from the Lower Marion Conservancy to work with the Pennsylvania Environmental Council in reviewing the SALDO and the zoning?
So hold on NPC thoughts.
I just think, I think it fits perfectly within the Planet Commission's agenda and, and, um, they, they might, it might just be a handed glove to have, to, to take the Pennsylvania Environmental Council up on that offer. They're working with municipalities and trying to remove green barriers, to storm, uh, remove barriers to green stormwater sort of, yeah, infrastructure. And, and it's also what our SALDO does, what our zoning does. I think it's what Mr. Bressi is proposing to do with the, with the shade tree ordinance and the environment.
And the zoning board and everything, yes.
Yeah.
So we got a letter from Maureen at the Conservancy. The Pennsylvania Environmental Council is a partner with the Delaware River Watershed Initiative. They have funds to evaluate zoning subdivision and land development and offer guidance to identify barriers to green, green stormwater infrastructure implementation. And we qualify for these funds and it would require about 10 hours of staff time and in addition, I'm sure, you know, connections to Planet Commission and a presentation to us. Um, if it's something that we're interested in doing, then we should tell them soon so that we can get in line for funding. And it's a sort of, over a 12-month period is, is the length of time that they will provide these services.
Is that 10 hours a day of staffs?
10 hours total. I could, we can, I mean, I can tell her if you're available.
So, I mean, I know the EAC is working on stormwater right now, so it seems like having, this would be a good time for Planet Commission to work, you know, and see if they can work alongside the EAC, you know, work together.
It's a lot of people in a lot of different commissions sort of working on the same thing, but we don't want to do duplicative work. We want to work together.
I, I talked to Todd about this, he was at the Climate Action Task Force looking for ideas and, uh, I think he had not actually spoken to the EAC. So I think it might be good to have maybe an EAC member, that we encourage an EAC member to attend that meeting if they're going to talk about stormwater issues, I mean. And both chairs, both. Very active groups. Yeah, and both Jesse and Todd Bressi were, were really open to an idea of a kind of a joint meeting and they would meet together and coordinate their efforts.
So it's possible that we could offer sort of a prioritization, which is what Todd suggested. Uh, they don't have to be one and then the other and the other, they can sort of dovetail in with each other, um, so that we could maybe take advantage of this opportunity. I guess Sean would like to get some more information about what the actual commitment, what those 10 hours actually mean, um, from an office perspective. And then maybe in two weeks, we would be in a position to offer the Planet Commission more guidance, buy into this, see if we can get into this and have access to the funds.
Yeah, it does seem like a, a good opportunity with the Windsor pilot, wouldn't it just help us, the?
Well, it could, sure.
Well, we, we talked about what's the challenge with Windsor, the challenge is dollars. If you're going to dig everything up to replace, replace stormwater management through a grant, you get to repay your road, right? So I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
All right, so you want to, um, be looking to this? And I'll sort of communicate to Todd that generally, this is where we're agreeing with his prioritization, but we'll meet again in two weeks and we'll have time to mull it over.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. All right, great.
Good.
So there's that. Um, check that out. So I did have a meeting with the library. Uh, the library feels that they need more space and they have a lot of children's events and they're sort of packed in where you have a speaker and then you maybe have 20 kids and then you have another 30 kids sort of roping through the end of the library, trying to all pay attention in here. And, um, they also have put aside some funds for, um, some kind of capital improvement. Um, I know that it is council's position that the build, the community building belongs to the borough, um, that in many ways we want to look at the three primary users as tenants. We want to come up with MOUs of how those could be used. Um, and so I communicated that. I also, though, wanted to see opportunities for any capital improvement we can make to the community and how it can be done in partnership so that, um, funds can come from multiple sources and in pooling those funds, we can get a lot more done together. So, interested in council's thoughts there? Uh, the, the envelope of the building probably cannot change, uh, because it's in a floodplain and it would be cost prohibitive, probably just wouldn't make sense for us to sort of expand that envelope. Um, but there is thought of how the spaces as a whole could be reconfigured so that, um, everyone can have their cake and eat it too.
Yeah.
Right? And then we can sort of update things to make them more multipurpose.
That's, mm-hmm.
If council's amenable, I might ask for them to come in, just give a brief presentation at the next meeting. Would you like that?
Sure, yes.
May I ask, I know the envelope can't be changed, can the height be changed?
Well, that's, we make the rules.
I, I think there is some information, I'm sorry, there's some information out there in the world from their last, um, construction when they added on the back, that there was some information regarding what weight could be held by that roof and what supports would need to be enhanced in order to have that.
You might end up at the same cost for.
Right.
Remember, remember the terrace was supposed to cost 85,000.
Well, right, I was just going to say.
My connotations would end up being over 300,000.
Because of the poor soil.
Well, right, so I remember that they were, they had tried to negotiate those, I got some pieces.
The giant screws that they were going to dig 30 feet down into the earth.
But to think about how all the space that we have there can be.
Bring me an auger.
Can be used more efficiently by all of the people who want to use it.
Yeah.
Seems to be good.
I, I think there's an opportunity in presenting that plan and that vision and finding multiple funding sources that makes it more palatable to actually move forward, that we can actually drive the MOU process by sort of offering everybody a chance to do more, um, rather than sort of coming in and saying, well, now we're going to set up rules for you and rules for you.
Right.
Now, it's a whole reinvention.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right. I will, uh, contact them and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I mean, I think regardless of what happens, the library has a, a strong point, they need an advanced space. I mean, practically every other library, I can't think of a library that does not have some sort of space, you know, where people, it, it does need a, yeah.
And, and just a minor tag on, as long as we're talking library events, we're having story time with the mayor. Uh, October 27th at 12:30 PM and it will be in Borough Hall and I'll be reading stories and talking to children about what being a mayor is.
All right. Um, any announcements?
I, I have one more business issue.
Yes, sir.
So I'm thinking more about this, you know, presentation for Hanson Court.